Good morning.
Good morning.
You guys still asleep? Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, all right. Confort Lee, he's the only one that said, "Good morning."
Good morning.
We're gonna start out with a prayer and then the Pledge of Allegiance, of course.
Lord, we come humbly for you, asking that you continue to bless this college, bless the individuals that work in it, and to continue to bless all the individuals that are partners and with the college that help us to be successful on a daily basis, serving the lives of the community and the students in this community. Lord, we also ask blessings upon the Welch family, as Dr. Welch passed home last night, a former city council member who has given so much to this community, we ask that you watch over his family. And also, Lord, we ask that you watch over all the families in the DC/Washington area and the families that were affected by this tragedy. All these blessings I ask in your Son Jesus' name, in whom I pray, and in whom's name you may pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on my nation, among God, and the individual with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to the presentation of the resolution, Dr. Law.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to ask Jan Rue to come forward, and her husband can join her, and others who want to stand with her. Stand right here, okay?
I'll stay with him.
All right. Jan Rue began her career at St. Petersburg College as a student assistant in the program for the deaf and hard of hearing on the Clearwater campus in 1989. And whereas Ms. Rue earned her associate in science degree in office systems technology in 1993, she then became a full-time employee as a support services specialist in the program for the deaf and hard of hearing. Later, she earned an AA degree from St. Petersburg College, and whereas Ms. Rue was always willing to give her best to her students and the college, her dedication was recognized as she moved to the district office in 1996 to assist and later manage the Enrollment Management Information Call Center. A creative and organized person, she became the college's first cyber recruiter. And whereas Ms. Rue graduated from the University of South Florida in 2003 through the University Partnership Center, the first college employee to do so, she returned to the Clearwater campus as an academic advisor, becoming one of the pioneers of the One-Stop Center or MAP concept for student services. And whereas Ms. Rue has a warm and generous spirit, we wish her happiness in her retirement as she travels, spends time with her family and loved ones, and volunteers for her many charities. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and the community by Jan Rue and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment through the years ahead. This resolution adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees the 17th day of September 2013. Hear, hear.
Thank you.
(applause). Can you say goodbye?
I can say goodbye. It's been a long journey. It's been a fun journey. This college has meant and continues to mean so much to me personally. It's made a great deal of difference in the lives of myself, my family, my husband's a graduate, and I honestly can't go to Walmart without somebody stopping me and saying, "I know you, you're an academic advisor," or they wanna ask me about financial aid.[271.72][271.72](laughter). We at Clearwater are proud that we were trained in financial aid and are able to help students. When I graduated from the university partnership with USF, I called Dr. Sesta, who was then the lead advisor, and said, "Okay, I've got my bachelor's, I wanna come home." And Clearwater is my home campus, but I know SPC is my family. Thank you.[302.82][302.82](applause).
All right. Sherri Armstrong.[316.02][316.02](laughter). Sherri, stand right over there if you would. Sherri Armstrong began her St. Petersburg College career at the Health Education Center in 1993. And whereas Ms. Armstrong transferred six months later to the district office to work with several administrators, including Dr. Bob Sullins and Dr. Willie Felton, and whereas Ms. Armstrong moved to the Clearwater campus three years later, she serves as an administrative assistant to Provost Stephen Lee Johnson. Over the years, she worked successfully with a number of Clearwater provosts, including Dr. Patricia Rauel, Dr. Bert Perga, Dr. Ann Cooper, and Dr. Stan Vidito. And whereas Ms. Armstrong, who has a warm, outgoing personality, as well as strong leadership skills, then moved to student activities as an administrative specialist. She believes it was her best move of career because she loves working with students and the students love her. She is responsible for starting many of the Clearwater campus' most beloved traditions, such as Leadership for Life, and she will be greatly missed. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and the community by Sherri Armstrong and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment through the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, the 17th day of September 2013. Hear, hear.[403.11][403.11](applause).
My career at SPC actually began in 1968, when I started here as a student. And I'm always proud when I'm asked for my employee number to only have a five-digit one, so...[463.61][463.61](laughter). They go, "And?" No, that's it. It's five digits. I want to thank the college for giving me so many opportunities, not only personally, but educationally, and allowing me to work with hundreds of fabulous colleagues and students. I've always, always been proud to say I worked at SPC, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for 20 of my best years. Thank you.[491.98][491.98](applause).
Dr. Law, I think there's some more recognitions that you have?
There are. Mr. Chairman, I think you may end up being part of this ceremony too. The State Board of Foundation checks from the Helios.
Oh, okay.
I sense that we'll move over to the microphones and Foundation Chair Kent Turbin.
Let me just say a word, so you know what we're doing here very quickly. I'm Tom Furlong, our new board member and former vice president here at the college, but currently serving also as chairman of the State Board of Foundation. And Joe Lang is a longtime State Board of Foundation member, who's also local here with the college. This, the foundation works very closely with the local foundation here at St. Pete, and we're giving this year $905,000 in scholarships to the 28 college system foundations to alleviate costly student loans and ultimately help meet the workforce needs in Florida. The St. Petersburg College distribution this year is $13,500 from Florida Blue, $29,348 from the Helios Foundation, and $4160 from Bank of America. The Dream Maker Scholarship Award from Bank of America is targeted at first-generation college students to cover tuition, books, fees, and childcare. Florida Blue's funds are establish a nursing and allied health scholarship fund. Scholarships are presented to students enrolled in nursing and allied health. And the Helios Foundation money is to provide scholarships for first-generation and college students. These are given preference to students pursuing a degree in education. So we're glad we can do this again this year, Dr. Law.
Thank you very much. Who has the check?
Ah, there you go.[620.27][620.27](laughter). I have the check to the foundation.
Okay, very good. That's our foundation chair. Kent Turbin, congratulations. Yes, my check.[628.02][628.02](applause).
May I take just a half a minute? I'm very pleased to be here, also on behalf of the foundation. St. Pete College should be very proud of the state foundation. It was the dream of our own Phil Benjamin, and he put it together in 1994. The Phil Benjamin Matching Funds are named after Phil. It's, and today, we can take pride in Tom, he's doing a super job as chair. So, the St. Pete College is an integral part of this foundation, and probably wouldn't exist but for what came from SPJC, SPC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, under the heading of "We All Work for Somebody Else," we would like to acknowledge some recognition that we received from the Tampa Bay Business Journal. Steve Malla.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. President, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Steve Malla, I'm the wellness coordinator here at St. Petersburg College. Today, I'm here to share that for the fourth consecutive year, St. Petersburg College has been named a finalist for the Tampa Bay Business Journal's Healthiest Employer Award. To be named a finalist, SPC had to demonstrate our commitment to wellness by showing, sorry, showing how we promote wellness, coordinate strategic planning for the program, and do a good job of reporting. So, I'd also like to mention that under the leadership of Bridget Bello, Tampa Bay Business Journal started this program four years ago, and I'm very happy to present this plaque today in recognition of our award.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Welcome.
Wow, hopefully, we got an inside track on winning that thing this morning.[771.56][771.56](laughter). She assures me that's not the case. All right. So does any board members have any comments this morning? Mr. Fine?
No.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Bello? No? I have one, a very quick one, actually two. One is that we had the foundation luncheon last week, and Ms. New, you should be commended on a great luncheon, not only a great luncheon, but I think finally our foundation is hitting on all cylinders. She's getting people into place, get hires, and getting people on the ground that are... I hear about people all over the county now talking about the foundation and how they're helping to raise money to do this, the Palladium and other places, so it's going very well. So you should be commended, you're doing a great job, and we appreciate it. The luncheon was great as well, too, so... I'll let Dr. Law talk about the Midtown stuff a little later. I don't wanna steal his thunder, but I'd also just like to highlight, Dr. Law, that Dr. Carney and is Tyron Quentin here? Yeah, I thought I said...
He is.
Both of them dealt with some issues this month that I was kinda involved with, and they did a great job. Just want you to know, they're always trying, eager and ready on how to fix things and how to make them better for the college, and so you both should be commended on the efforts that you made. May you can talk to Dr. Law about what they were, I won't get into that. And good to see you, Dr. Furlong. Thank you again for always being a partner and a friend of this college. You have done such a good job for not just the college, but for our community, and we appreciate it. And the state. I mean, anybody that can deal with George Kirkpatrick for as long as you did is a good man. That's all I have. We need to approve our minutes from last month. Do I hear a motion?
It's all moved.
We have a motion that's been properly moved and seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, we move on to the monthly reports. Mr. Lang?
I have no report, sir.
Ms. Gardner?
I have no report this morning.
Okay. And then we're on Dr. Nikotera. Where is he? Okay, there you are. How, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Law. Thanks for the opportunity to be up here this morning. And one of the things that I wanna talk about is our response to the Affordable Care Act, which is upon us right now. And I wanted you to know what we're trying to do with our students, to help them understand the impact of this as they go through their education and as they go out into practice. And with the Affordable Care Act, it ushers in a movement toward a holistic approach to patient care. And so what that means for our students is that they're going to have to work together with a wide variety of practitioners out there. And we really believe that this was very important for our students to go out into the workforce with this skill. So about two years ago, with the leadership of faculty and staff support, we put together a program that is outside our normal curriculum. And so as you can see from the slide in front of you, that we really have three main goals in our program here, and that is, we actually have our faculty from one discipline go in as a guest lecturer in another discipline, in their area of expertise. The second thing that we're doing is we have guest speakers coming in on campus almost on a monthly basis. And we have some speakers that are local about various topics, and we're also bringing in a couple of national speakers as well. The third thing that we're doing are team-based learning scenarios, and if you can go to the pictures for me. So, there's no doubt that in healthcare education, hands-on is essential. So, one of the greatest exercises that we did several months ago is we actually simulated an experience where students from various programs could work together. And so we had a patient or a simulator have a heart attack in our dental clinic, and our EMS group responded to stabilize the patient and then to transport the patient up to the second floor where we have a mock hospital. At that point, our nursing faculty took over and brought the patient back to life. So, we hope to do more of those. We were successful in that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, board members? Thank you, Dr. Nikotera.
Oh, great, you're welcome.
Very good as usual. Onto Ms. Ludwick. Oh, nope, Ms. Brant.
Nope. Dean Rebecca Ludwick.
Ludwick, right, yes, that's not...
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Law. It's my pleasure to introduce you to the five programs in the College of Health Sciences and to share with you just a couple of our many successes. As you can see from the first two columns, our enrollment is down slightly this year, about 9%, which is reflective of the college overall. But if you look at the next set of columns, you can see that our overall success rate and our number of graduates have increased from 2011 to 2012. We strive diligently to help our students be successful. For the past two semesters, the faculty and the programs combined, you can see in the last column, made 286 outreach contacts with their students under the Each-One-Reach-One initiative, which means that they made either a personal phone call or face-to-face meeting to reach out to a student beyond the typical classroom activities. They also spent a total of 287 hours providing discipline-specific tutoring. The first program that's highlighted is Health Services Administration. This is an online program, and they are in the process of putting together a capstone showcase that will be on December 13th, the evening before commencement, and this will give the graduates an opportunity to share their projects, and of course, you'll all be invited. That program has several sub-plans. They have a general track, a human services track, health information, EMS, and now we've added respiratory care. The next program is also completely online, it's the BAS Dental Hygiene Program. This program was created with the purpose of helping address the shortage of supply in qualified educators for the 21 Florida programs in dental hygiene. It's the largest degree completion program in the nation, and at least 60 of the graduates have gone on to earn master's degrees, and at least three have completed doctoral programs. The third program highlighted there is dental hygiene, the AS degree. We have a brand-new clinic, and this year is the 50th year of dental hygiene at St. Pete College, and the 100th year of the discipline. So in the spring, on Saturday, April 12th, we'll be hosting an open house to share these events with you, and I hope that you'll be able to attend. One thing you might like to know about our face-to-face dental hygiene program is that we have 12 military students currently enrolled. They also recently undertook local anesthesia, they now teach that to the students, they also offered a CE for dental hygienists in the community. They are also getting ready to start a sealant project at Pinellas Elementary School. This was supported by a grant from Pinellas Rotary Club to buy the equipment that we need to provide sealants for these children. The fourth program is radiography, that's another face-to-face program. In the 32 years of that program, they've had only two graduates who did not become employed within six months of graduation. The accrediting agency tells me that that far exceeds the average. Usually, it's about 88% do not find, or do find, employment within the first six months. So they're like at 99.9%. The other thing unique about that program is they have such strong community support amongst their 15 affiliates. On our graduate survey, the employers told us that they rate professionalism of our students at 96%, and that's what's most important to them because they know that they'll have the technical skills. Their overall rating was also 96% across all the categories that were evaluated. The last program, the AS in Health Sciences, is a new program recently approved by the Board of Trustees. We started out this semester with nine students in that program, and now we're up to 102 because we're starting to go out and move students from provisional programs where they're trying to get into other disciplines like nursing, radiography, health information management. And we're putting them into this program so that if they do not matriculate to a different discipline-specific program, they have the opportunity to graduate with a degree, and in that degree is embedded a certificate in healthcare services. We believe that will give them the opportunity to get their foot in the employment door. It also will enable them to enroll in the BAS Health Services Administration program. They'll meet that admission criteria. Lastly, I'd like to close by saying that we're building on that interprofessional education effort at Health Education Center. Within this Health Services AS program, we're going to have an interprofessional education course dedicated to that topic for these students. Thank you.
Any questions, board members? Thank you, Dean Ludwick. Great job. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, trustees, and Dr. Law. My name is Carol Brant, and I am the newly-elected Chair of the Career Employee Service Council. And with us today, we actually have Tamika Dukes, who's our vice chair, and Vivian O'Dell, who is our secretary for the Career Service Council.
And Vivian?
And who else? Vivian? Okay, stand up, all right.
So today, I would like to share with you some of the effects that the Professional Development Initiative, which we began last year, has had on the employees and the progress that we have made. And throughout this year, we're going to continue to build on that initiative, and it will continue to remain a priority. We've learned through our training how our roles as career employees relate to the words we first actually heard from Dr. Law in May of 2012 with regards to the College Experience Initiative. Those who do not teach have a responsibility to help students get to class in the best condition for learning. As part of our training, we really took a closer look at our customer service skills, how we interact not only with the students, but also with each other, and learning how to better our environment, create a more positive attitude and a more positive environment. So, the first impression then that we see that our students get is basically when they arrive on their very first day to the campus. And our facilities team, which includes our landscaping, our maintenance staff, our custodial services staff, and our security, they do a wonderful job of not only maintaining our building and our grounds, but also keeping us safe. And they wore these shirts that you just received on the very first day of school to assist our students in getting to where they need to be and stopping and helping them along the way if anybody had a question. So, another area that impacts our students is in our advising area, and our advisors hold really a lot of the responsibilities in our College Experience Initiative. They have a responsibility in the career and developmental advising area, the My Learning Plan, the My Life Plan, early alerts, and action plans. And so, they tend to get a little busy, and so when they get busy, we actually ask our career specialists and some of our student support specialists to go out in the lobby with iPads in hand, assist the students. Sometimes the waits do get a little longer than we would like them to be. So by spending quality time and assisting those students in the lobby, it really creates an environment where they're not maybe as restless, and also, they're more prepared by the time they get to that advisor. And they know the right questions to ask, and they get all of their questions asked, hopefully, in that one session. Another area that our student advisors support is our new student orientations. And part of the new student orientation, they, the students get to go visit the learning support centers. And in the learning support centers, they get an opportunity to see those instructional support assistants. They get to see a variety of services that are offered there and a variety of opportunities. And by visiting that center, they get an opportunity to realize that it's a place that they can go, not only just for tutoring, but when they do need to go for tutoring, it's an environment that they've become very comfortable with already. And so, besides those areas, the other area is our administrative support, which really includes our technology support specialists who keep our campuses, our classroom technology running, our offices. But our students also, I have found, ask lots of questions, lots of technology questions of our tech support. So, they get a chance also to impact the lives of our students and interact. And then, of course, those of us who support our administrators, whether it's in provost's office, in academic chair, or dean's offices, or at the various offices at the epicenter, our responsibility towards our students is to be able to interact with them, whether it's face-to-face, on the phone, both our students and the community, and make sure that they get whatever they need, and it's our responsibility to follow through and make sure their questions all got answered and did they get connected to the right people. So throughout this year, we're going to continue with our professional development focus, and we are going to continue to do our part to help our students get to class, ready to succeed, and finish what they start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Questions?
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea. I remember being a college student, and it would've been wonderful to have been able to find somebody to help, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Law, if you would, I have to step back to 3D where the public comment, we passed over that. If there's anyone here that would like to make a comment from the public, we're opening up the floor for that now.
Mr. Chairman, I would beg a favor too. I would like to have Suzanne, if she's willing to. Recently, there has been some slight, and very slight, changes in the public comment section, and perhaps a brief rundown on what's necessary for someone to speak. There are none today, obviously, but...
I think that's a good idea, should be on the record what those changes are.
Mr. Chair, the law changed, and we have incorporated those provisions into our board's...
Mr. Chair, the law changed, and we have incorporated those provisions into our Board of Trustees procedures. If somebody wants to go ahead and make a public comment, they have the right to do that. The directions would include coming up to the staff desk and picking up a blue registration card, filling that out, and the chair would then call that person to the podium. The person who wanted to make public comment would be provided three minutes to go ahead and make that presentation and would be able to present the board members with any materials that would go into the record.
Okay. Board members, any comments on that?
We always have had a public section where the public could speak. It was during our, we would open the meeting up, and now there's some state, some changes at the state level, and we're just trying to comply with those so that everybody knows. I would ask Dr. Law that we make sure we have him at the door so that every, you know, if somebody is from the public, we'd ask him whether or not they're here to speak under the public comment section. So thank you, Ms. Gardner. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're down to all business. I think we have most of that to do.
Mr. Chairman, you had asked last month that we revisit the schedule of meetings and locations, so you'll need to adopt that. And then, I think we just confirmed the time of the regular meetings and the special meetings. So you've got that, and then the assignments to our direct support organizations.
Are we ready, board members, to? I tell you what, I will, I will, I'll work with the foundation this year. I'll find a time to do that. And then we'll, we will, I don't want to appoint people, but if we would, by next meeting, everybody, please, just look at the direct support organizations.
I think we touched base with everybody between me and Mr. Chairman. Okay, so I think we're all okay on what, that was the recommendation. You had indicated that you would take the slot that wasn't selected by the board members.
Oh, that's fine. Which one wasn't selected?
Leeper Ratner.
That's fine. I'll work with Dr. Gardner.
So as presented was, has been vetted with the individuals named.
So the foundation has?
The foundation has Mr. Fein.
Mr. Fein. And the Institute of Strategic Policy.
Has Mr. Oliver.
Okay. And so I assume Ms. Bello took the Alumni Association.
Alumni Foundation.
Okay. And then, and then Leeper Ratner. I have it. Okay. Well, then, we can adopt it. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Someone.
Second.
I'll signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Non-opposing, we'll move on to our new business.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, would you, was that motion for all of item A and B together?
A and B. Yes, sir. It was.
Okay, thank you, just clarification. Thank you.
We're making this easy for you. Now, if we just show up. The new business item, student success. Dr. Law, you have an information item.
Well, yes, I asked, we're going to make a presentation again with at least one new board member here, but we'll continue to do this, on our scholarship and student support. You know, as we start the academic year, I think it's really important for us to calibrate all of our scholarship initiatives, make sure that you're comfortable, that you have a sense of how much we do, what does it look like. You'll get approached in your civic interactions with people saying, what do I do? How does it work? So we thought we would, it's a nice report, but it's also very timely. So as we start the year, we'll give you an overview of our full student scholarship.
You mean, we're not just supposed to send them to you?
As long as you don't promise them anything, you can send them to me. It's when you have already made the promise, then send them to me.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning, Mr. Dr.
I wanted, several months ago, when we were going through the, when we were adopting the budget, we also showed you this scholarship fund budget. And at that time, I commented that of all the different financial aid sources we have of the $63 million in that budget, about $53 million of it is Pell Grants through financial aid. The balance, then, comes through waivers, other scholarship programs, and so on. So what we wanted to focus on today was to give you some specifics on the awarding of those scholarships, how they're awarded, the amount, so on. This slide represents a breakdown of the scholarships and waivers that were awarded last, during the 12, 13 academic year. And you can see that the lion's share is the state-funded scholarships. And our first section, Dr. Williams, is going to come up and take you through those scholarships. And then Francis New will take you then through the foundation details of scholarships.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
In front of you, you'll see our scholarship website. It is on our main webpage under Financial Aid. So every time you go to the SPC webpage and you go to the top, you'll see Financial Aid, and you can scroll over to Scholarships. The page will show you information on specific scholarships, how to apply, how to complete searches, and what types of scholarships that we offer. Thank you. So I'm going to share with you information on state scholarships as well as other institutional scholarships. First, you'll see we spent last year $6.2 million on Bright Futures and First Generation. I found out that we have provided Bright Futures students, and a number of 1,855 students received Bright Futures scholarships who were enrolled at St. Pete College last year. You'll also see our institutional scholarships, which will include merit-based scholarships, Johnny Ruth Clark, the Presidential Scholars based on GPA, and for high school students. Currently, we are serving over 700 students who received the Johnny Ruth Clark and Presidential scholarships from last year to this year. Our Fine Arts and Music and Honors College are for students who are participating in Fine Arts and Music or participating in Honors College. We provided a total of 230 scholarships to those students. You'll also find our Athletic Scholarships. We have currently about 87 students receiving Athletic Scholarships and tuition waivers to serve our athletic program for this year. Last year, 123 students received Athletic Scholarships, students who came and left the college. We provide waivers through state approval. We were awarded 40 waivers last year. 20 were Athletic Waivers, and 20 were waivers for Music and Arts. This year, the state has approved us to expand our waivers to over 300. And so we have yet to do that, but we're going to work on that going forward. Francis New will now come and share with you how the foundation handles their scholarship opportunities.
The Foundation Scholarship Fund currently exceeds $21 million, and this represents over 270 scholarship opportunities for our students. Of that $21 million, $15 million is endowed. These scholarships are providing and will continue to provide a consistent award to St. Petersburg College students in perpetuity. The remaining $6 million is what we term Term Scholarships. Term scholarships are those where the award amount and the duration of the fund will vary. The Foundation uses a common application system whereby students can complete and submit a single online form and along with two letters of recommendation, and then they join the applicant pool for those scholarships they qualify for. Selection committees, which may be comprised of donors, donor representatives, foundation and/or college representatives, review the applications and make the selections. When all the selections are completed, the foundation then takes the information and sends it to our Financial Aid Department, our Financial Assistance Department. We have an important and very strong relationship with them. Financial assistance will then confirm the eligibility of the students and post the awards to the student's account. Throughout the process, the foundation communicates with the students, telling them their status, any additional information that might be required, and ultimately, and hopefully, the amount of their scholarship award. Foundation scholarships support students pursuing a range of degree objectives, including baccalaureate, associate of arts, associate of science, and certificate programs. Each of our scholarships is unique, and the criteria are established by the, excuse me, by the donors to those scholarships. We have, the criteria, of course, spans the range. Some of the most common are academic program, area of study, or major. We have scholarships for nursing, education, engineering, technology management, EMS, paramedics. The list goes on and on and on. And while this isn't an area of study, I do want to point out that the foundation, over the past year, has increased its awards for study abroad scholarships, so we're very pleased to report that. Other criteria, other common criteria, may include academic standing and financial need. The foundation awarded close to 1,700 scholarships during the 2012, 2013 academic year, totaling more than $1.2 million. During the first term of this academic year, we've awarded 535 scholarships. Our awards range from $100 to $2,000, and we don't always like to talk in average, but if there was an average award, it would be somewhere between $700 and $750. The scholarship application and information appears on the college, excuse me, the foundation website, and I think if we can bring up this, we also link to the financial aid website that Dr. Williams just showed you. Over here, we can click on Foundation Scholarships. This will bring you to the foundation website. It gives you some basic overview information about the scholarship program, clicking on Submit an Application. We have information about how to submit, some tips on the essays, the letters of recommendation, so on and so forth, that our students are really finding helpful. And also, we have a listing of all of those available scholarships, the 270-plus that I mentioned. Students can scroll through here and learn a little bit more about each of the scholarships, the deadline, the award amount, and if there's additional information required. In addition to the information that we have on the college website and the foundation website, we post on the college homepage, we post on the student portal, to make sure that the students are getting information that they need as they apply for our scholarships, that they understand the deadlines, and the additional information required. We also keep an eye on those students that aren't with us yet, and the foundation has printed brochures and flyers that we have distributed to those students who we hope will be future St. Petersburg College students. And that completes this report. Are there any questions? I'll ask on behalf of Doug, and Tanja, and myself.
I have a question. Do you, all the funds get used? Do you have more applicants than you can serve?
Always, we have more applicants than we have funds to distribute.
I mean, with those 270, what's the average applicants for?
The average number of applicants?
For a scholarship.
For, oh, that's, we have, we awarded 535 scholarships this past term. I just didn't give it to you in this, hopefully, this will answer your question. We had probably 1,200 applicants for those 535 scholarships.
So the word's getting out.
The word is getting out. Yes.
I have a brief question for Dr. Williams. You said we went from 40 to 300 state? Is that state, was it vouchers?
Waivers.
Waivers? Why did that happen? Is that a good?
What was the background on that, Doug?
Mr. Chairman, it's a legislative matter. Let me see if I can help out. 40 was the number forever and ever, and ever, and ever, and ever. Clearly, you know, as institutions are looking to change their impact, they went to a formula of funding based on the number of FTE you have. So several of the large colleges had argued to release, to go above the 40. Those are tuition waivers is what that is. So we need to be really careful that you're not giving away what you previously were collecting for. But as there are multiple campuses, and as people have expanded the opportunity for those programs in the arts and other areas, 40, think of 40 students at Miami-Dade, it would be, you know, ludicrous to think of an impact. So now, it's formula-generated, and it significantly opened the door for us. Well, I'd like to bring that to the December, we hadn't planned for it, so we're not going to spend it this year. Let's bring it to the December planning session and get some guidance from the board as to how we might optimize that.
I just thought that was a big jump.
Yeah, that's a huge jump.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I might just put a bow on this. I appreciate, you see, it's a lot of money. I mean, we have a lot of opportunities for students. I think we're doing an increasingly better part of making it logical, easy. You can find the stuff, you can move through. If you're at one place, you touch, you can get access to all the information for all the places. We're working on the timing of this. I think in my own assessment is, we want our best game to be on the table when families are making decisions about college early in the spring. We want people with choices to have us as a choice. I think if we can get that scholarship information out there to many of our students who will choose us, we'll have a better chance of attracting them. We offer great value, a lot of reasons students would choose us, but if they're uncertain about what the finances look like, we put ourselves at a disadvantage. So we're working on getting it into a much more timely and discernible flow.
Okay. Looks like we're moving down to D, item D. One, for the Education Fund, it's an action item. Center of Excellence.
Mr. Chairman, members.
Do you need to take it up, or?
These, I'm sorry, I'm just checking on timing here to see how we're doing. Mr. Oliver's going to call it at 9:30. Right. We have a grant opportunity here, and as is always the case, we'd like you to approve it. This one is in the amount of $26,000. You have the necessary information. I'm trying to think who is handling, Linda Hogan's is handling this one for us, okay? But it is a student support grant.
Ms. Hogan's doesn't need to come forward unless we have any questions. You guys, any board members have questions? Thank you, Ms. Hogan's. Dr. Hogan's, right? National Science Foundation, the STEM Technologies. Any questions from board members? Why don't we just take up item D1A and B? Do I hear a motion to accept?
Someone.
Second.
Second. I'll signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Non-opposing, why don't we skip over this one and go to Human Resources? Dr. Law, is that a good idea?
Yeah, we'll do Human Resources and Finance is 9:30, and then we'll be.
Yeah, we'll be done. All right.
You have the Human Resources Report. As not a surprise, August is a very busy month getting people hired. You see the listing of part-time adjuncts. Pleased that we're bringing you these in real time. We hired them in August, and you're approving them in September, so that's a good deal. We, as you look at this list, you know that we value greatly our adjuncts. We're working very closely. I met with them at the Welcome Back individually so that we could share whatever dialogue was appropriate regarding the Affordable Care Act. So I met with, I mean, with the groups individually to be sure that I answered their questions and shared with them our position on that. Mr. Chairman, other than that, there are no particular items in the personnel report, and I recommend your approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve the Personnel Matters Report?
Second.
So then, properly moving, second discussion on this one. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Non-opposing, we have moved down to our finance report. Duncan.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Still a little early in the year, but I wanted to show you where we are trending. When this report was generated a few weeks ago, we were around 3% down in enrollment. I think as of yesterday, we're actually at 1/10th of 1% down. So we've gotten about back to our, where we budgeted flat. So as long as it stays there, we'll be, you'll see this report already looks better if I were to run it again today. The revenue, on the revenue side, you're noticing it's about a million, a little over a million down from our trend where we projected. Some of that, though, is due to a shift in the lottery funds. I'm going to show you that on the next slide as to why that is. On the expense side, the, you see, our expenses have also reduced. We're not going to wait till April. If we start seeing a downward trend, which we did at the time, in enrollment, then we're going to start earlier in the year making some spending adjustments. You also see two lines that run very closely together, but then start to widen up at the top of the chart. We actually went in and made an adjustment to our budget downward to reflect expected reductions in instructional costs and some of the contingencies that we would not spend. So we think right now, everything is in line. So we think right now everything is, is in line. On this other chart here, I wanted to point two things out to you. Look at the very top, you'll see over on the left, two colored cells under the, the year-over-year budget. And you'll see that last year, our lottery revenue from the state was about 10 million, and now it's 12 million. So they moved about $2 million from our general revenue, which we, we receive monthly, to the lottery, which we really don't get till usually after April in the fiscal year. So you're, that's why we're seeing a delay in some of our revenue, then you'll see it pick up later on in the year. Other than that, our year-over-year revenue is only about 40,000 down. So again, pretty flat. It's about where we budgeted, so it's, it's looking good. Two other things I just wanted to point out. Over on the administrative expense side, you'll see two highlighted cells. One is showing a $60,000 reduction, year-over-year reduction. Just reflecting, we, we, in the budget, we showed you that we had reduced a lot of administrative costs. And even though it's early in the year, you're already seeing that being reflected in the, the personnel expense. We're also reflecting a reduction in the adjunct and supplemental expenses, which is simply a factor of the enrollment going down somewhat. So it's down about 130,000 year-to-date. But overall, things look good. We've still got, if you look at the very bottom, we got about a $15 million surplus this time, which is about the same as where we were this time last year. So I think we're on course.
Doug, with us being down, Dr. Duncan, I'm sorry, being down, what'd you say, 128,000 or something like that?
Which?
In enrollment.
Well, if you look at the very top on the tuition, it's only down about 300,000 year-over-year. Now this, remember, was run a couple of weeks ago, so it's about flat now.
That's what I was going to ask you. So after the express courses started last week?
Right.
We would, we would be probably flat, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions, board members, on the financial report at all? Academic matters, there's none. I have a question here from Mr. Lang. We have the proposed changes for the board trustees rule manual. Do we still have to have a public, we have, still have to have a public hearing here?
Yeah, she's still going to have a public hearing.
I'm going to open the public hearing up now for the proposed rule changes. There being none, I'll close it. Thank you. And now we are back to our capital outlay, item E. Are we ready to go? Is she not ready to go?
We are, we just texted Mr. Oliver and anticipate that he will call in.
Mr. Oliver's on the West Coast, by the way, ladies and gentlemen.
Right, so.
He's getting up fairly early out there.
Or getting in.
Oh, yeah.
He's calling now. Okay, great.
And let me, before we get, are you going to get him on the phone here?
Yeah, he's going to call in.
Oh, is he going to?
That's going to ring right there.
Before we get started, let me just commend our president on this. I mean, he had allowed, and I say allowed because it's not any board member's job, but in any good.
Mr. Oliver?
Uh, yes.
Hi, welcome to the meeting.
Uh, thank you, I'm here.
And you're on speakerphone.
Are you here, Dale?
Okay, thanks.
Can you hear us, Dale?
Yeah, I can hear you, excuse your sign.
Are you up? I, I was just going over, I, I want to commend Dr. Law especially because it is not every day that leaders recognize a weakness in the organization. And let me just tell you, that is one of the things that have been, that I've been impressed with, Dr. Law, from day one. He had allowed us to put a trustee on this particular committee not to provide oversight or try to do his job. I know some people feel like that's what happened, but that's not what happened in this case. What Dr. Law did recognize was that we needed to come up, we had someone that did this job for over 30 years, Dr. Law?
A long time.
A long time. And we had no idea how this got done over those past 30 years. All we knew is that we came up with a good product at the end. And recognizing that, he allowed us to be a part of that process so that we could come up with a actual process going forward to handle these types of situations in, in terms of our building and our capital outlay and other things. And is actually going to work and going to work with Mr. Oliver. And I would ask, now that I think about it, Dr. Law, Mr. Lang being included in that, that final process, just so we have that, we're going to re-engineer or have a actual plan that comes back to the board on how we handle capital outlay processes going forward. So that we have one documented, that the board is comfortable with, and that we, that we can move very smoothly through the process going forward. So I'm asking, and Dr. Law and I have discussed this already, that Mr. Oliver as a board member and has been a part of the process, has served as chair of this last group, that he continues to go through the entire process so that he can work with Dr. Law and Mr. Lang and bring us back a, a end product of what, how this process should work. Now going forward, I don't believe that a board member should be involved in this. I believe that it probably should, we could probably accomplish the same thing, and I think Dr. Law feels the same way, with a good community person cheering this process. But we're going to allow them to come back with the recommendations. I think that's best because they were a part of the process and they actually, they actually know what happened and they know how we can get to a good product without controversy. So that's just my little addition to this, and then I'll turn it over to any board members that have any comments, and then Dr. Law. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Do you have any comments related to the process?
I, I think the only comments that I would have, Mr. Chairman, is that I, I, I believed it worked. I think Jim Wechter was a, a huge part of that in, you know, keeping everything in order and certainly helping me through the screening process and through the screening committee. But I think the way this worked is something that we should apply going forward, just like you said, to all of the other projects. And it really just kind of keeps the, I guess, keeps, keeps the process to it that, you know, really is without, the, the result of it is really without question at that point. And, and so I would support exactly what you're saying, putting this process in place, using it for other large capital outlay projects when certainly we're wanting to keep any bias out or, you know, anything like that. So I would, I would support moving forward with, with your recommendation.
Board members, any other board members? I would ask that after this entire process, negotiation period and everything is over, Dr. Law, that you all come back to us and tell us what you think since you were a part of the process. And then, and then we can go from there. The other board members can maybe get us a report and then we can read it and give you our comments and feedback before our meeting. And then, maybe it's at our December meeting that we can discuss that.
I think that's probably very appropriate.
And then put a policy in place.
You're good. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your patience to get us to this day. First of all, let me, let me say without any hesitation, the assistance from Mr. Oliver, both his background, his personal and professional background, as well as his representation of you, the board members, was invaluable. I've done a bunch of construction work, no, it's, it's a, a fraction of the work that Mr. Oliver has done in his professional career. So he was very, very, very helpful to us to get through this. Second of all, I think we should be mindful that building a project that is high visibility, high impact, high desirability, and has a community face is different than building a science building in the middle of our, our own campuses. They're both valuable, they're, both have a, a place that, that otherwise we wouldn't be doing it. But the community piece is really important, and, and we have to figure out how to make sure the community has both ownership and confidence in, in our recommendations. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm anxious to kind of bring forward a summary of how we might do that because quite frankly, we have the Clearwater Library project coming over the horizon, and it's going to be a, a variation on this theme. But I think we now are, you know, shame on us if we're not smart enough to figure out how to avoid some of the pitfalls that we, we've been in. So, so let me say this. Secondly, let me congratulate the board. This is one of the hardest projects I've been involved in, I'm sure all of you have, have been there. But when we got to the final selection, we had four very good firms in the room, four very accomplished firms. I want to say one thing, when the dust settled, though, there wasn't a single firm talking about whether they could meet a 30% criteria for local expenditures and impact in the community and making the life of the community better. Those numbers were running to 40 and 50% is what the, the, all of the, the players were. And if you think back, Mr. Chairman, a year ago when we started, we were worried about 30 being too high. And as we just held the ground and gave people a chance to do the right thing and to work with subcontractors and to stay focused, we now have changed the dialogue in construction in St. Petersburg, and there is no reason in the world that we can't reach well beyond 30%. I'd be surprised if that number's not 50% when the, when the dust settles. So again, I, I tell you, we had four very good things. Along the way, this item has been to the board on any number of occasions. The board has worked very hard to provide beneficial community impact, that's one of the values and criteria. And we managed to find the, the very, at times narrow, legal place to be sure that we were recognizing local impact without violating law, which doesn't allow that to be the sole criteria. And as a result of the, the guidance from this board, we, we worked very hard, the, the criteria are out there. We had a screening committee made up of community reps as lo, as well as, as Mr. Oliver chaired that and, and others. They provided from eight very qualified applicants, they provided the four that they wanted to move for further consideration. Each of those then came to what was the selection committee. By law, Mr. Oliver and I comprised the selection committee. Each had a chance to make their best pitch. They all did a very, very credible job. And based on the background and guidance from, from this board and both my experience as, as well as the staff and particularly Mr. Oliver's experience, we have a recommendation for you. By law, we must present to you the three ranked groups. We present, you have those in your recommendation, but it's our, our pleasure to recommend Lima Construction for the contract for the Midtown project. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer whatever questions, and certainly Mr. Oliver can add to, to my commentary.
Board members, any questions?
It's long overdue now.
Mr. Oliver, I, I would ask that you make a motion, please.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion that we move forward with negotiations with Lima Construction on the Midtown project.
Second.
It's been properly moving, second, any discussion on the item? Is it being done, or signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposing? We will accept the, I would ask that we amend our amendment, we accept Lima for negotiations and the other Gilbain and A.D. Morgan in their respective places, just in case something happens, right?
That's correct.
We accept that, Mr. Oliver, that amendment to your motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, it's a long time coming. Hopefully we can get, get down to this thing. You guys will be negotiating, and Mr. Oliver will be a part of that process again, as well as Mr. Lang, so that we can make sure that, at the end of the day, Dr. Law's going to bring us back a process that we all can live with. And we can make comments on it. And I agree, I think it should be in December. I think you're right, I don't want to be too hasty and move with the library coming, that kind of stuff, that you get as much comments as you need or, and feedback you need to give to us as well, so. I don't know how long, and the other things, I don't know how long it's going to take for you all to just get your schedules together, to sit down and try to figure that out.
We're scheduled to meet next Monday in my office. So we're moving forward, sir.
Okay, so if there's no other business, Mr. Oliver, we're going to let you go because it's, it's early where you are. There's another business.
Okay, thank.
Business.
I, I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of it this morning.
Oh, thank you. The president's report is where we're moving down to.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you, Doug shared with you that we've done, despite being down a little bit on opening day, we have done a really good job with what we call our express semester and alternate semesters. For a lot of our students, that really is the most convenient time, is to, to get everybody back in school, get families, get the kids in school, and then start taking the 12-week semester rather than the 16-week semester. So we've done a good job making sure all of that is out there. That's one. Two, we'll bring you a fuller report, but I spent a good part of my day yesterday reviewing where we are with the developmental education. And you hear me clutch just a little bit, my team is doing a spectacular, this is going to be a really hard issue come, come January, actually the end of October, where students, we no longer have the ability to require a placement test to get students in the right slot. My team's doing a spectacular job accessing other records so that we can engage with the student, help the student make the best choices, give them our recommendation as well. But we've changed all of the dialogue, hours and hours and hours of training. We, we'll show you the whole, I'm proud of the plan. It's going to be hard anyway, but anyway, Dr. Williams and her team have, have done a really good job. And then thirdly, I will brief you, I think I, I mentioned to you, we have embarked on the replacement for the learning management system, which is, we, we like to refer to it as the online learning management system. We use it for virtually every class we have now. So that process is in place, and I will be happy to share with you. I think that we may have sent it out under separate cover, but I'll share with you all of the parts that have to get done before. This is not just writing a check for software, this is a fundamental change in how we're going to do learning, online learning at the college. So those things are taking most of our attention. We, by invitation, were asked to come to Tallahassee on October 16th, so before the next board meeting, we're going to have a quiet conversation with some key legislative staff leaders to let them see what this developmental education looks like on the front line. And we're very proud to have a chance to kind of assure them of our commitment to making it work, but to tell them how difficult this is really going to be. This, this, this one has me nervous, I just need to share with the board.
It should, I mean, I think sometimes the state makes recommendations.
You know, that, yeah, none of us, you know, we'd all, everybody wants less developmental, not more developmental education. We want our students to perform better. We, the high schools and K-12 are, continue to, to make improvements, but to, to turn it loose at the point where students make the, the transition into St. Pete College and say to a student, "Pick the level where you want to start your college career." We need to do a better job for our students than simply say, "Pick something." We're not going to do that.
Here's been my concern, Dr. Law, and you know, we've had this conversation with Senator Negra.
Yeah.
And my conversation with him was, you know, we have now prepared ourselves to make sure that people that enter St. Petersburg College enter, into programs so that they can be successful moving forward. Now we pull that back and we just say, "Come on in," and when they fail, we still have to serve them. So I'll continue to have that conversation. I'm, I will be with him on Friday of this week, so I'll continue to have that conversation with him. You know, the, if we have put a system in place and we show it is successful, I think that, that they should reconsider and let us move through with that system to show them the results for at least a few years to be able to say, "This works," as opposed to doing this, just a knee-jerk reaction. So again, I'll be with him Friday, so.
Appreciate your leadership on that.
I will definitely say something else to him about it. Board members, any comments? Future agenda items? We have another public speaking forum in our agenda, just in case someone from the public forgot and wants to speak? None? I would add one thing is Jeff, I saw Jeff Cavanaugh walk in. Stand up, Jeff. Dr. Law, Jeff was a part of a team, and the rest of you should know, a part of a team that the Housing Authority put out a bid to do veterans' housing. And for the first time, I believe, in the state of Florida, they have selected a group called, a, a, a project called Victory Commons that will house 50 wounded women veterans here in St. Petersburg. And that's getting on the way. You should be commended for the job that you did in selecting the group, and I think it's going to be a great project for our community, just another way that St. Petersburg College is involved in the community. But Jeff, thank you again for, for your hard work with that. If there's nothing else from any board members or Dr. Law or from the public, we will close this meeting. I'll see you October 15th at the epicenter.